Wait. Yeah.
You don't have to have one of those electronic flashes that go up and down.
Right.
Because it's hit and miss. People stop.
They watch them, you know.
Yeah.
It's also the visibility.
Right.
Yeah. I'm excited about it.
It is nice to be able to watch so well.
Yeah. With the community cheering.
Yeah. I think it's great. It's a great use of that property because, you know. I know we're good friends and we work with them.
Jan? Are you ready?
Yeah.
But we can go ahead?
Our fans are always will be sick.
Okay. All right. Okay, it's a little past 6:30 and we will call the Arapahoe County Planning Commission Meeting of Tuesday, January 15th, 2019 to order. We note that we have a quorum of the planning commission here. We have one member with an excused absence. There are no minutes to consider, so we will move right to the first item, which is case number LE18-005. Long's Pine Grove Open Space Location and Extent in Representing the County is Cat Hammer.
Good evening, commissioners. The county attorney has reviewed the noticing documents and has determined the planning commission has jurisdiction to make decision on this application. The site is located southwest of the intersection of East Florida Avenue and South Yewinta Way. The surrounding properties include single-family residence and the parcel is adjacent to the High Line Canal. The applicant and owner of Arapahoe County Open Spaces is requesting approval of Long's Pine Grove Open Space Location and Extent to develop a public park on 2.8 acres that is currently being occupied by single-family residents. LNE holds public entities to the same standards as a private development for site plan approval. The applicant is proposing a trailhead to the High Line Canal, passive play structures, internal trails, a pavilion, gathering spaces, a bathroom facility, parking lot, and a sidewalk along South Yewinta Way. Arapahoe County Open Spaces and the design team hosted three public meetings over four months in 2017 to talk to the community about what they would like to see in the park. Open Spaces also created a website to post project information and provide access to public engagement presentations. And there was also an online survey on that website. Arapahoe County Four-Square Mile Neighborhood Recreation Needs and Opportunity Assessment was complete in 2015, and that identified specific program elements that are needed and suitable for the neighborhood. The public input, design, and the need assessment all provided guidance resulting in the development of the preliminary program for the initial park design concepts. Considering the findings and other information provided herein, staff recommends approval of case number LE18-004, Long's Pine Grove Location and Extent with the conditions recommended in this report. It's my understanding Ray Wynn with Open Space has a presentation, and I would ask that you hold any questions for me until after his presentation because he may be able to answer some of those in his presentation. Ray?
Hello, thank you. As Cat mentioned, my name is Ray Wynn, and I'm an Open Spaces Planner with Arapahoe County Open Spaces. So a little bit of background in the park, Cat already mentioned. We purchased the property in 2014. She mentioned we did the 2015 Four-Square Mile Neighborhood Recreations and Opportunities Study. And that study identified the need for more parks and recreation opportunities in the four-square-mile area. So as she mentioned too, we did a extensive master plan process. This LNE application is the direct result of a year-long extensive planning process with intensive public outreach conducted in 2017. The master plan process included extensive public outreach to shape the design of the park, various public meetings, an extensive traffic study that I'll touch on later, and presentation of the final design to the public. The final design proposed in this LNE represents what the public as a whole told us they wanted in their park through this master plan process. So a little bit about the public outreach for the master plan. As Cat said, we had three public meetings. We also had a website where we had a webcast of our public meetings so you could look at what we presented at the public meeting in the convenience of your own home on your own time. We also had online and in-person surveying that we did with people that came to Cheyenne Arapahoe Park and at Four-Square Mile Neighborhood Meetings, which we also attended and updated the Four-Square Mile Neighborhood Group countless times. And we showed, most importantly, the public other feedback influenced the master plan process and park design throughout the process of the master planning. As I said, we did traffic studies. So part of the LNE process, as you know, is to do a minor traffic study to determine parking needs and traffic impacts in the immediate area. The park generates as much traffic as two single-family homes, and these trips are likely to happen in off-peak hours. During the master plan process, we heard from the community about various traffic issues along Florida Avenue. So we heard the community, and we, Open Spaces, went the extra mile, no pun intended, to fund our consultant, Olson Engineering, to work closely with the Arapahoe County Public Works and conduct a major traffic study. We had Olson present the traffic study to the Four-Square Mile Neighborhood Meeting last spring, and the results from the traffic study are as follows. The park will only generate 18 trips per day. Impact to the surrounding street system as a result of the park development will be insignificant. Realignment of Yewinta Way does not improve the operation of the intersections and will use too much of the park site for the park to be a viable park location. You can see at that arrow that I have there, one of the things we heard from the citizens on Yewinta Court up there was that they wanted realignment of Yewinta Way to Yewinta Court through the park to make that a four-way intersection. And so we took the extra step and had our consultants do this major traffic study and analyze it to show that there won't be any significant improvement to that intersection We also proposing major bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements over what currently is happening on Florida Avenue. Do we have a pointer?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's a major issue with bicyclists and pedestrians. Currently, this is not sidewalk at all. It's a goat path along here where people are walking in the dirt and the mud. Then if you come down here, there's this pinch point right here in this bridge. This is in the city and county of Denver, where if you're a bicyclist or pedestrian walking through here, you literally walk out into traffic right here. It's also a dangerous intersection right here from the High Line Canal crossing Florida Avenue. So part of our park design and proposal is, as any development, we're required to complete sidewalk on our development, which would be right here. But because this takes pedestrians and cyclists into this dangerous bridge intersection, and Denver's identified they're not going to expand that bridge, we chose instead to provide sidewalk along this part of Florida. And what we'll do is we'll have access through the park here so folks can access the High Line Canal and safely go this way or safely go this way, but they won't have to use this dangerous pinch point right here. Also furthermore, the city and county of Denver just recently agreed to use rapid flashing beacons, and Arapahoe County Public Works recently donated two rapid flashing beacons for pedestrians to use as a traffic device to cross safely on the High Line Canal. So Denver will be installing those. Arapahoe County donated those to kind of mitigate that situation. So this is how we're addressing some of the bicycle and pedestrian safety in this area and improving it with our park design. So I want to highlight that we also worked diligently with the adjacent property owners, the Goodman's to the south here in this area, and also with the Topmans to the west up here in the city and county of Denver. We specifically worked with the Goodman's as they have been sensitive to the park design and future park construction. We worked closely with the Goodman's to choose a custom privacy fence that Arapahoe County Open Spaces paying for. This custom privacy fence will be installed before construction to minimize disruption from the park construction. Furthermore, we're also planting a large number of trees and shrubs in the 20-foot buffer area in here between our two properties to mitigate noise and increase the privacy for the Goodman's. So now I'm going to turn it over to Jess from Stream Landscape to discuss the details of the park.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. Let's see. I'm wondering, are you all holding paper copies so I can?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Could you please just give us your name and address?
My address? You bet. I'm Jesse Clark with Stream Landscape Architecture. Our address is 1245 East Colfax Avenue, Street Number 401, Denver. Great. Yeah, do you mind if I just enlarge like that a little bit? There we go. So. Come on that end. There we go. So as Ray mentioned, the primary access points of the park are located here at Yewinta in Florida. We've introduced a new vehicular and multimodal, really, access point at this edge of the of the site. And then there will be a new bridge down here that connects to the High Line Canal and High Line Canal Trail. So starting up at Yewinta, the plan is for kind of an entry gateway area with gardens. There is a little walkway that essentially preserves this grove of trees here at the street edge. The main plan here was to preserve as many of the existing pine trees as possible. And we've really managed to preserve quite a few of these trees. I can't remember exactly how many we had to lose in order to accommodate this plan, but the number was under 10 in terms of the high-value trees. So again, we have these gateway garden area here. The walk comes down. There's a little overlook terrace here. If any of you have been out to this site, there's well over 20 feet of grade from the top of the hill to the bottom of the hill, and the sights of the front range and the mountains are really spectacular from this location. So the plan was really to both preserve as many trees as possible while capitalizing on all of those views. So there's an overlook here. We've introduced a nice turf lawn area. It's not huge, but for a site this big, it's a usable turf lawn area that can be both, you know, picnicking as well as throwing frisbee or kicking a ball around, those sorts of things. And then adjacent to that, between the turf lawn area and this large grove of trees here is a new play area. And that play area is an age-separated, nature-inspired play area that will be, it's essentially inspired by pine trees and pine cones themselves. So there's a little feature right here. There'll be a climbing feature that mimics a tree coming out of the ground. And then there's a natural kind of rock scramble and a concrete slide here. So the idea being that we're capitalizing on natural materials or mimicking natural materials and very low-maintenance facility here. Again, colors and things like that that really are fitting with the neighborhood and the open space park itself. And then we've got some natural, some other natural wood-inspired features. There's a little picnic area up here associated with the play area. And then when we move over next to the playground over here, we have a relatively larger picnicking area and a shelter. That shelter is, it's going to be beautiful. It's a glue-laminated wooden structure. And there will be four tables underneath that feature as well as some adjacent picnic areas and things like, this little area in here is actually going to be a grove of trees. So there's some picnic tables under the trees. And then over in this area here, you'll notice there are a couple more picnic tables. These picnic tables are located under another existing grove of pine trees. So we really tried to distribute and allow for that kind of passive and picnicking activity to happen in different locations. Where you might have more intensive and focused group picnicking here, there are opportunities all over the site for people to have a less intensive, smaller intimate experience. I just wanted to point out, from an infrastructure standpoint, we've accommodated two ADA spaces here. We've accommodated horse parking, horse trailer parking in the parking lot here because, as you may know, the High Line Canal does allow and encourage equestrian use. We've accommodated, I can't remember how many parking spaces, here we go, 13 typical parking spaces in addition to those ADAs. And then we've got water quality facilities both here and here that will accommodate all of our runoff on the feature before discharging. So those are the major features of the of the park. The last thing I wanted to point out was, you'll see this trail over here is a soft surface. It's a crusher fines trail, and it's an interpretive trail where we've intended to honor, again, kind of the heritage of the Long's Pine Grove itself with another feature here that has some interpretive, meaningful elements. And then there's some other elements that are around the site that act as both gateway and interpretive elements that refer back to the Fibonacci sequence, which is present in a pine cone. So last but not least, there will be a double-vault restroom located both close to the parking lot so that it's easy to service as well as within walking distance, easy walking distance to all the major facilities on the park. I think I've covered it. Access to the High Line. The bridge I mentioned down here. Yep. Just of note, the actual bike or ADA route, because there's so much grade here, the actual bike and/or ADA route would come along this walk here, come across the overlook and come down this way through here. There are, unfortunately, we had to integrate some stairs here and here which provide more direct route but are not ADA accessible. That route, again, kind of snakes its way through the park this way. Any questions?
Question?
I have a question. How did you determine the number of parking spaces, the sufficiency of the number that's being proposed?
Yeah, so the number of sufficiency, the number of spots, I think that that were calculated were related to those trips that Ray talked about earlier, as well as sort of what a typical event would handle. We're actually technically providing a few more spaces than we would need to if you were only going on track count trips. So, you know, when you think about a birthday party or something like that, you think about how many cars you really need to accommodate. We heard a lot of concern from neighbors about, you know, the fact that Yewinta is actually not configured to accommodate any parallel parking. It's an odd street in that manner. And so there was a lot of concern on the neighbor's part that they wanted to make sure that we weren't going to encourage people to try to park there where there isn't room to do so. So we really tried to maximize the amount of parking while accommodating our emergency services with turnaround, you know, the appropriate turnaround radiuses, all those kinds of things. So we kind of squeezed as much as we possibly could while trying to make it a nice parking area. As Ray mentioned, we've got a lot of trees and buffer. This is a garden area in here, as I mentioned. We've got trees in there that we were able to get a variance for. So we really attempted to make this as nice of an open space parking area as possible that will accommodate as many people as possible.
How many homes would be considered walking close to the park?
Oh geez, I don't know that I'd know the answer to that. Hundreds. Because there's quite a bit of multifamily down kind of here. There's a, you know, in Denver, there's multifamily that's easily walkable to it. And then there's, geez, there's probably 50 homes up here that are directly accessible. I mean, within a quarter-mile, there's definitely 100-plus homes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
Do we have a sign-in sheet? There's no one on the Location and Extent, but I'm not sure if they have signed up on our sheet. Okay, we have no one signed in on the sign-in sheet, but we will open the public hearing regarding the Long's Pine Grove Open Space. And if you haven't signed in, you're still welcome to come forward and make comments.
Papers that were here were signed in.
The other one was for another hearing.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
Well, it looks like some of you are on Yewinta, so I can call out your names if you've signed in. That's okay. Jesse Clark?
That was just me.
That was you? Okay. Don Andreas?
Andrew.
On East Iowa Drive?
Correct. How are you?
Okay.
Good evening.
Yeah, I don't know if we can get back to the overhead that has the picture of the homes so you can see all of our residences. But I own, my wife and I own 8351 East Iowa Drive, and I'm speaking also for the owners of 8524 East Iowa Drive. And then we have Mark here, and we're the three property owners that have the largest influence along Florida Avenue where you're proposing the sidewalk and the bike path. And we were never aware of that until I actually went out and talked to her survey and asked them what they were surveying, and they brought it to my attention. So as the person who lives along that, that street, and it's a side property of mine, my main entrance is off of East Iowa Drive, but, and then you can see my swimming pool in the upper right corner. So my property is a big triangular piece of property there. But you have 14 feet approximately from the back of the curb line. Thank you. From the back of the curb line, I don't need the pointer, and to my fence line. So, and I was told they're going to be putting a sidewalk and a bike path there, but there's also a burn there that I had built 21 years ago when they widened Florida. also a berm there that I had built 21 years ago when they widened Florida. And so there's a changing grade there. So my concern is that if you put a bike path and a sidewalk, what kind of retaining wall are you going to put in? How's it going to impact the trees that I planted on my property? And also the trees that I've maintained for the years for the neighbors up and down that street that are actually on Arapahoe County property? We, as that kind of enclave of homes, are concerned about the damage to our fence and the trees we have there and what kind of retaining you're going to do there. So I guess I have a question. What's the width of your sidewalk? What's the width of your bike path? And...
Okay, well, those questions may have to be answered by the...
Okay. Well, I made a call to a gentleman named Roger. I don't know. That's you, Roger. I talked to you. I left you a message today, in fact. I don't know if you got that. Yes. So we have spruce trees that are probably 30 to 40 feet tall on the top of that berm. And I'm thinking if you have to excavate, because you better have about a three and a half foot grade difference from the back of the curb line to where the fence is, how are you going to do that without killing the root systems of the trees along that property line, as well as my neighbor's property line and Mark's property line? So that's the main reason I'm here, is to find out how we mitigate that. And I guess, talking to my neighbors, even though they've been to some of the three prior hearings, that sidewalk was never proposed. Is that correct? Did you hear that?
We've never seen it.
Did you hear that? No. So it wasn't surprising to me. If it weren't for me querying the surveyors, we wouldn't even know it was going to happen. So my concern is, what are you going to do to protect our property when you do that? And so that's really all I have. You don't have an answer to that, obviously.
No, we don't.
No, okay. So I would really like to know what's going on here. Maybe someone can get back with you. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
We did present this at the four-square-mile neighborhood.
I wasn't there.
These people were there and never heard.
Just for the interest of sort of seeing the public comment moving, the staff can go back and address some of these questions after a public comment has concluded.
Okay. The next person, number three, is Mark?
Paul Chelli.
Yes.
So I won't waste a bunch of time. Basically, I'm at the house on the corner.
Just state your address, please.
Mark Paul Chelli, 1514 South Euenta Way. My concerns are the same as what Don put up there. I'd love to be able to see a profile of what that looks like. So if we saw the sidewalk with a grain, the potential undermining how far that's going to go, to take a look at that. So as Don said, that's a tree-lined area and some of those trees are north of 40 feet tall. So it does make sense to where you're coming through the park with the bike lane to get out of that pinch point. I understand that. But we also have a lot of concern. That is our privacy. That is our security of where we live in that neighborhood. So if those trees go down, even with a sunken backyard, you know, a lowered backyard, that takes away a lot of the noise and the barriers. So I'm very, very concerned about that. So that's what I want to say.
Okay, thank you. Robert Murphy?
Yeah, so this is Mark's house. This is my house. And this is Don's house. So we're all right there in this area. I want to point out that there is a sidewalk here. And this is a well-used sidewalk that goes to the library. The people are using the sidewalk now. And so this sidewalk goes all the way down here. And indeed, that bridge is a problem whether you're on the one side or the other. It's a problem. And we've seen people hit this bridge on bicycles and fall into the street. So I think there is a possibility of just having access to this, using this sidewalk without doing a sidewalk here. And so anyhow, this is sort of, this is a surprising thing to us. We wouldn't want to lose, you know, these things really do keep the noise away from all of our properties right in this area right here.
And if I might add, visually protects us with the view of the library.
Okay, the next name is Michelle Tormann.
My husband's right below me on there.
Okay.
Only curiosity.
Scarlett Tormann?
Sure, this sounds like fun.
Can I get a pointer too?
All right. I really want to use this thing. Wait.
Name and address.
Name and address. My name is Skylar Topman. And we are actually in Denver County. We're at 88 East Florida. This is our residence right here. The only question that I have pertains to this area right here and this growth right here. My understanding from earlier drawings was that these, the plan that was going to be done was going to be a little bit more further down in this area. And the development of the Denver Water Open Space that was right here was going to be a little bit more expensive. This is a different picture than I recall seeing. And I'd like to know more about, frankly, I'd like to see more of that work done that kind of shields our house from there. And also a little bit more about what's going to be happening with, I'd like to hear more about what's going to be happening with the growth that's already here. It's kind of a weeded growth of shrub trees. And I'd like to know more about what's strategically planned for this stretch right along in here. Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. That's all that have signed in. Is there anybody else that wished to make a comment or ask a question? Mr. Lampert?
Mark Lampert, 9022 East Colorado Drive here representing Four Square Mile tonight. Thank you very much, Standing Board members. This is a big bonus for the Four Square Mile area. As you heard back in 2015, when the survey was done, we were asking for more open space in the area of Four Square Mile. At that point in time, we had just successfully finished Welch Park, which is on Jewel Circle. And that was the only newest open space that we had. Then all of a sudden, there was the unfortunate passing of a family that lived in this house. And through a lot of pressure, it was put on to open space to purchase that because we needed more space for open space. We did not want destination parks. We wanted something that would be nice, more neighborhood pocket-type parks. So the whole planning was done in a very fine way. There was a lot of opportunity for homeowners to participate and give input on what we wanted. One of the biggest things that was discussed was the issue of the four-way stop at Euenta in Florida. And how, for those that have remembered, it was a four-way intersection. And then it was misaligned, as we say. And we wanted to try to align it up because it is a very difficult way to cross. We have a library that's up in the upper right-hand corner, but it's very difficult to cross Florida at any of the intersections because of the misalignment. There's always going to be cars going by. So one of the things that was discussed was the fact of that sidewalk. And as you've heard, the sidewalk is a little bit of a contention for the people that are there and that live nearby. However, the concern has always been the safety of the residents as well as the safety for the people that are coming to that park. We know that Denver, after years and years of working on that bridge over the High Line Canal, that Denver would not cooperate in widening it, nor allowing anything to happen to make it safer for citizens of the Four Square Mile to cross, as well as for Denver citizens to come up to the library from down on Quebec Way. So the concept was, we had to deal with that. And there was some concern about the meandering trail that comes from the intersection at the very top right-hand corner to the crossing of the High Line Canal. It is thought that after some education, people will start taking that and avoiding the bridge, which is a suicide situation. And so from the concept of taking that meandering trail through the park and then taking it on the south side of Euenta, the dark heavy purple line, people would be safer walking there rather than crossing because it is virtually impossible at rush hour and even on other times to cross Florida at any point in time. It's just because of the way the sidewalk is set, the way the intersections are, you're never going to get an area. So that sidewalk was an item that was proposed to be a safer site. Hopefully, the open space people will be able to work, as well as the designer, to work with the residents to protect that berm, the trees that are up there because of the fact that that is a health and safety issue, we feel. And it is a very mandatory that we have that sidewalk there because there is no real sidewalk for anybody to walk from, basically, Parker Road down to this park. I think from the standpoint that we liked the opportunity to have so much input, there was a lot of high attendance at these meetings, a lot of good concepts. And those concepts were impressive from the residents and the citizens, not so much from the planners, which was always good to see from that standpoint. As I said, education is going to be needed because of the fact that if people, once they know that there is going to be that trail through the park, we certainly hope from a safety standpoint, it would be helpful. We also appreciate the fact that Arapahoe County has donated the signs at the crossing, but that's only part of it. The other part is, we need to have better lights on our four-way stops that are there. Right now, the lights that are up there are around a stop sign, and they flash. They're supposed to go on. Denver has a much better system, and that is a big, heavy red light that flashes notifying people. We have people that come from Parker Road. They hit Parker, they decide that it's too long. They see Florida. They decide to cut through it. And they miss that stop sign. We've had too many accidents, both at Euenta and at the bridge, because people are not failing to stop. They're failing to stop. And they're not protecting our citizens as well as the residents that cross on the canal. So if Denver's not going to cooperate, then we have to do our best to see what we can do. So again, we're very happy to have this. We think that the interior of the park is going to be an asset to the neighborhood. We're looking forward to make sure that this becomes a pocket park and not a destination park. That's why when the question was asked about the parking, we'd like to see the parking because there is no parking on Euenta. We want it minimally. We want people to ride in here, walk in here, or horseback in here because there still are a lot of horseback riders that live in that neighborhood. So again, we hope that, from our standpoint, that this goes through because we've been waiting long and hard for more open space in the Four Square Mile. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward? Hello there. I'm Celeste Nottingham, and I live on the opposite side, and I don't know how to use this, of Florida Avenue, right across from where the P is on proposed. And right now, I want to make the comment that we do have the stop sign that was ineffective, so now it's flashing. My house, and is this the, oh, push the silver one. Okay. My house sits right here. And it's, nope, sorry, this is it, with that driveway. And you can see how it's an angle. That west-facing angle is all windows. The stop sign is here. And every time it goes off, my bedroom is right up in front. And it's like, you know, flashing in your bedroom. It's like flashing in the living room. It's flashing in the TV room. I don't need it to be any brighter or more constant than it already is. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward? If seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And does anybody wish to respond to the issues that were raised?
Hello. I'm Kathy Valencia with Engineering Services Division for the county. And I just wanted to respond to the comment about the proposed sidewalk. So the missing sidewalk shown in the yellow line there, when the applicant came in for pre-submittal meeting, we determined that instead of requiring sidewalk at the north location of the project site, which takes you to nowhere, as Ray mentioned, at the Florida High Line Canal intersection, we were going to require sidewalk from Euenta to Parker. That's not part of the LNE project, however. So they've selected a consultant. This year they'll be designing that. They'll do public outreach for that. And that will hopefully be constructed in 2020. But it's just noted in this project, but not part of this project.
Thank you. Pat, do you have any other comments that you want?
I was just going to respond to...
Well, the public hearing has been closed.
I'm a consultant.
So, let's see here. You got, I'm Jesse Clark with Stream Landscape Architecture. Let's see. I think I can handle this. Oh, dad gummit, there's no planting on there. Skylar, I wanted to show you the plants that we've got there. So I just wanted to respond. In this area, a couple of things. We have added more plantings to help screen your view and buffer your property. Of note, the Denver Water Easement, there are some constraints for what we can do in there.
Euenta, please address your comments to the client commission.
Yeah. So of note, there are some constraints in the Denver Water Easement area, this area between the Denver County and Arapahoe County boundary, right there. So this little triangle was the area that he was talking about. There's also quite a bit of grade related to the High Line Canal, et cetera. So, but I just wanted to acknowledge that the planting plan does make an effort to add buffering vegetation in that area so that their property has additional buffering and screening. So that's the plan. But you can't rightly see on the LNE submittal, but...
Is there fencing that goes along there?
Yes, sir.
What fencing is that? Is that here in the...
So as Ray mentioned earlier, on both the southwest edge here, as well as that northeast edge right here along the boundary, there will be new fencing constructed. So that if there is any existing fencing along those edges, those will be removed by the county. And then the county has agreed to work with both homeowners to build new fencing to their liking essentially, to provide additional barrier and buffer as well. So both of those fences are, they're both, they both requested privacy fence of some sort. So within the, you know, legal limits, obviously, it's not going to be a 20-foot tall wall. But so we and the county open spaces staff has worked with both adjacent property owners to help get something that they like as well.
And will the maintenance of the park in the future be taken care of then by the county?
Maintenance of the park will be all Arapahoe County Open Spaces.
Ray?
All right, thank you. Okay. Any other questions from the board? We have closed the public hearing, so now we can bring it back to our discussion and our motion.
Just so I completely understand, so none of the sidewalk is part of this project? It's in addition to what we're talking about here today?
So there's a small portion of sidewalk. Right now, there's an existing curb ramp here. We're going to be putting a new one in here and here so that you can safely get across to the park prior to this being built. So from here to here, there's a small portion of sidewalk that connects to the interior of the park. But other than that, everything east of Euenta will be with the new project.
So then that yellow line where it said, you know, which is not the...
So currently, there's no sidewalk here. And that's how it's going to, yeah, it'll remain no sidewalk.
Outside the scope of this particular...
There's no proposed sidewalk here for this or in the future. There's no proposed sidewalk here for this or in the future because it doesn't take you anywhere. Once you get to the corner, the west corner, it just stops, so it's not safe to direct pedestrians in that route. That's why we're hoping that, well, they will be led through the interior of the park and through the bridge onto the Highline Canal.
This proposed sidewalk that they're worried about, have you looked at that at all?
This part here?
Well, the part that these brothers are.
From Parker to Uinta?
That's our CIP group, and I know that they're looking at different options right now, but they haven't come up with a final design yet, and they'll be doing public outreach for that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Anybody wish to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. In the case of case number LE18-004, Long's Pine Grove, location and extent, I have reviewed the staff report, including exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and any public comment as presented at the hearing, and hereby move to approve his application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to condition number one.
Do we have a second for the motion?
I second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Alones in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. The next item on the agenda is chase number GDP 18-004, copper leaf parcel J. We'll let the group clear out just for a minute.
Mr. Skinner, senior planner for the Arapahoe County Planning Division. The application I'm bringing to you tonight is GDP 18-004, copper leaf preliminary development plan.
All right, Dan.
Okay. Take two. Mr. Skinner for the Arapahoe County Planning Division. Application I'm bringing you tonight is GDP 18-004, copper leaf preliminary development plan, Seventh Amendment. Copper leaf, this application has been properly noticed. We have one deficiency in the notice, and that is the mailing and posting affidavit. There was just some confusion on the dates. Staff has talked to the applicant, applicant has talked to the staff, I have talked to the county attorney. We're going to correct that tomorrow morning and get an appropriate document. All that document does is say the sign went up on. It should say December 18th. I believe it says January 19th. I've been on site and seen the sign, it's there. So county attorney's comfortable, staff's comfortable. We'll fix it tomorrow morning, but the end result of this long rambling rant is you have jurisdiction to proceed. And can I ask that the applicant step forward and just confirm that on the record?
Yeah, my name is Dylan Detman, 111 Banix Street with Norris Design, and we did discuss that. That will be turned over in the morning.
And so the posting was from?
Yes, yes, the posting was correct.
Could you just state the dates that it was posted?
December 18th.
Thank you.
Today.
Thank you. Today being January 19th for the record, 2019. Okay. Thank you. This is going to go better. The proposal is for a, an amendment to the copper leaf preliminary development plan. This amendment is centered on parcel J. Parcel J in the copper leaf PDP is located southwest of the intersection of East Quincy Avenue and South Malta Street. Parcel J is approximately 21 acres. On the screen, I have the overall copper leaf plan, and you'll see there is a red oval in the upper left-hand corner. That is parcel J. This amendment does not impact the other parcels in copper leaf, so it's a clearly focused amendment. The application proposes a reduction in minimum building separation in parcel J from 15 feet, as it exists today, to six feet. Just for clarity, it's a separation, not a setback requirement. Setback being property fro, or the distance from a property line. Separation is, how close can two buildings, any two buildings, anywhere, property line or no, be together? Currently, it's 15 feet. It was approved that way in 2004. They're asking to reduce this to six. Staff noted that the side setback that's already in place for copper leaf parcel J is three feet, as it exists today. You add up one setback with the adjacent setback, you end up with six feet anyway. So it appears that this request even lines up with things that are already in place. The reduction to building separation is not going to affect any of the setbacks to external property lines or adjacent right-ofaways. We're going to leave it to the applicant to explain why they want this reduction, but I will move along. Like I said, this is limited to just parcel J. Staff is discussing some additional notes to be added that weren't part of your staff report. The planning manager noted when I forwarded this up for his review that this is supposed to be directed at single-family detached homes, but it wasn't narrowed enough. We wouldn't want to see this setback, or this separation reduction applied to things like large multifamily buildings. I've been in discussion with the team at Norris, and we have an agreement on that. There will be, you'll see on page two, there's a table with a little bubble around the number six. That used to be a 15, it's got to be a six if this gets approved. We're also having them add a sub-note that says this is limited to single-family detached units, and if someone were to come back onto this parcel with a different proposal for multifamily, the currently approved 15-foot separation stays in place. Okay, staff is recommending approval with the conditions stated in the staff report. We didn't have any significant feedback during the public referral, or during the referral agency period, and I'd like to know if you have any questions for me before I pass it off to the applicant.
I have a question for you. Is this South Metro Fire Station or is it Aurora?
South Metro.
Did they respond?
They always respond. In this case, in this case, they say they did not respond. When we get into the final development plan for this, they'll have something with actual building footprints to review roadways and so forth. I imagine that they didn't respond on this one because it's just not the level of detail they usually work at.
Okay. I was just curious, they know, I've run across this in other jurisdictions, you know, two developments I can think of, Boulevard One and Midtown, where the zoning was approved for six feet, you know, it's three-foot setbacks off the property line, but then they did require 10 feet of separation, so I was curious, you know, so which meant whoever built first could push the other guy over on the lot because the buildings still required 10 feet of separation. So I was curious if any other jurisdictions have allowed this to be adopted from a building code perspective, because those are the folks who put the brakes on the zoning. So I just want to throw that out there, and you may have an example of a positive one that's happening now that's in another jurisdiction. I'm just, I'm curious, having seen this crop up and get some builders in trouble when they got their approval.
Okay, I think I understand your point. If it's of any comfort, no matter what we do with this zoning document, our building permit division will hold them to building separation requirements. Now, there's always a way to get closer. It involves more expensive, more significant fire-resistant construction. So they'll have to work that out as we move through the FDP, but having spoken with both Norris and the potential builder for this, I'm pretty sure they got a handle on that. Let's ask them when they come to the podium.
Okay, great, thank you. Mrs. Skinner, I have a question as well. Are you familiar with what the building separation was for Richmond's Development in Centennial along Bronco's Parkway where they built a similar kind of housing area?
I know the property you're referring to, but I'm afraid I do not know the building separation requirement.
Thank you. Perhaps the applicant will be able to answer that question.
Looks like.
Thank you.
Anything else for me? Okay.
Okay, well, here's from the applicant.
Do you want me to answer the question right away, or?
No, you can.
Save those?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, great. I'll reintroduce myself, too. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dylan Detman, I'm with Norris Design. We're doing the planning and landscape architecture on parcel J, which Bill put up on the screen. I had a board that showed the same thing, but since he already has a screen up, this is probably going to work better for us. Thank you for the opportunity to present our project tonight, which is the PDP amendment to copper leaf parcel J, as Bill has mentioned, and we appreciate the staff's efforts thus far to get us here tonight, and we're excited to be moving forward in the latest copper leaf community. It's a quick overview of parcel J. We already saw it is located up in the northwest corner. That's going to be Quincy to the north, Radcliffe to the south, and then there's water quality to the west, is how that's hemmed in. See, there's nothing really to the west there that's going to be proposed. The reason we're here tonight, as Bill mentioned, was the 15-foot to six-foot building separation reduction, and we will have it updated, so it clearly states that it's only for single-family detached residential, not multifamily, so it's not going to affect that category of housing at all. The goal of this is to allow for a more attainable detached housing type that is alley-loaded and well-suited to smaller lots with a six-foot building separation. Coincidentally, I actually own a home with a six-foot building separation. It was plotted out around the time of the Civil War and built in 1890, so this definitely isn't a new idea we're coming with to you here. This has been done before, it's a development standard. The intent is to have this housing type in the northern portion of parcel J, closer to Quincy, but we're still working out those details in the FDP, so when we come back for the FDP, we'll see, you know, where those land specifically, but the point I'm trying to make is that's a portion of the site. Okay. Looking at the neighborhood context, to the east of parcel J, you can see KL and M1 to the east of there, those are going to be attached residential developments. L is actually a garden-style multifamily, even more dense, and then some more duplexes in M1, as well as commercial along the north and south portions of Quincy, so we have quite a bit of development going on here. Some of that's developed already, some is still in the works. Given that context, we believe a simple change of the PDP is compatible with the surrounding copper leaf community and will be a great addition there. I was going to bring up the slight issue with the affidavit, we already went over that, so we should be good there, we can move past that. The applicant, Linda Purdy with Richmond American Homes, and the master developer, Richard Frank, are also here to help answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate your support.
So am I have to understand that it's only between the buildings that you're talking about, so the four feet, because it's going to be alley-loaded? These buildings could be four feet from Quincy, is that correct?
No, the goal of this is a six-foot minimum building separation, so the buildings, the distance between the buildings is a minimum of six feet as opposed to the 15 that was in there. The alleys are going to be wider than six feet, so that, those don't really come into play. It's, you know, if you're down the alley and looking at them, they're going to be six feet apart at a minimum. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Mr. Frank, would you like to come forward and make some comments?
I don't have anything to add, excuse me, unless there's some questions.
I guess, from reading this, your intention is to have Richmond Homes build the cityscape housing?
Yes, they're separated townhomes that Richmond has built all over the city, Centennial and Littleton and all over the place. So they're like a townhome, but they're separated by the six feet.
It's more of an urban look.
Pardon?
It is an urban look.
Yes, it is. We're pretty excited about bringing that into copper leaf. It's something different. For copper leaf, it's actually our last piece of property for single-family. Everything else has been sold under development, and this will be a new product and probably a more, more attainable product.
Mr. Frank, can you answer my question about the Centennial development and what the building separation was on the Bronco's Parkway development in Centennial?
Six feet? Oh, Linda can.
Okay, great.
I wasn't involved.
Okay, great, thank you.
Richard, I have to answer my questions, but my name is Linda Purdy. I'm with Richmond American Homes, 4350 South Monaco, Denver, 80237. Do you want me to spell his name for you? Anyway, to answer a couple of the questions, one, as it pertains to our cityscapes at South Creek project down here at Bronco's Parkway in Jordan, I believe we actually had zero side setback, and there was no minimum separation stipulated in our plans with the city of Centennial. However, I can tell you that the lots are similarly sized to what's being proposed here, so it would probably be a comparable separation, assuming you placed that house exactly on the middle of the lot.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not sure we have anybody from the public here, but we will begin the public hearing to speak to the copper leaf PDP Seventh Amendment. Anybody wish to come forward from the public? Saying none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commission. For consideration, comments?
I do have one more question. How many units are contemplated for this lot?
This particular lot?
Sorry, I should have asked before when you were up here.
Again, we're kind of in the initial stage of planning, but.
Right.
As I recall, I want to say 74?
Sounds right. We could just show this, it's going to be an easier visual aid, we think. So the darker brown or orangish here in the north are the lots in question, or the yellow below would be more traditional, single-family that the six-foot would apply to.
So the yellow would be more single-family detached?
All detached. The six-foot would apply to these color lots up here, so these would have the normal separation.
So what would be the hypothetical difference in density between the darker tan and the yellow?
So as a matter of comparison, I can't really equate it to density, these lots are approximately 31 feet wide, and the more traditional single-family detached lots are 40 feet wide to accommodate a 30-foot product.
Okay.
It might also be important to note that no density numbers are being proposed or changed in here, too. It's still going to be the original.
This property is currently zone like 230 some odd units, and I think there's 170, 140 something.
140.
140 something. It was greatly reduced. It used to be a townhome.
Townhome, okay.
That was approved by planning commission and the board many years ago by a builder in the state.
And again, just because visually it helps me make the comparison, do you know how many units were built in the Centennial project?
There were 70. Exactly 70.
Okay, so you're looking at double the number, then.
Well, I believe what we have here per se is about 70, it's right around the 70 number.
Okay.
Total density is in the 140 ballpark, but that is greatly reduced from what was approved with the townhomes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I don't need you to.